Senator Rispichio, you're recognized for our motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my first notwithstanding our House rules motion is to bring back Bills 506 and Bill 477 from the voting file and to place them at the top of the second reading file for purposes of some additional amendments.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my also, my second notwithstanding our House rules motion at the request of the sponsor of Bill 473, Senator Tom Adam, I move to, I move to refer Bill 473 back to the Committee of Original Jurisdiction and instead put Bill 530 on the second reading file. And it'll be on item 21, so it'll just go in that slot.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So we're back to the second reading file. Senator Palacios, you're recognized on 477.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, did we, at the suggestion of the legal counsel, I went ahead and inquire with the judiciary with respect to the proper, I think, coined words to be used so that the amendment is actually, I'd like to propose the amendment that, and I pass it here, I don't have the bill with me, but...
Yes, Senator, you want to go ahead and read the...
Just, so it should read, except in the case of a levy on earnings, the marshals may execute the writ against the property of the judgment debtor by levying on a sufficient amount of property, they be sufficient collecting or selling the things in action, actually does the coined word. The decision we made last week to substitute that in the thinking that perhaps they should, they would to use the word auction, no, that is actually a proper word, inaction.
Inaction.
And this is, of course, the response from the judiciary Friday, so I pass on a copy to each of you, it should be on your desk.
So the change of the word, from the word auction to things in action?
Yes, that's, actually, that's from the old statute and it's continued to carry on.
Yes, thank you very much.
And of course with that, go ahead.
On that amendment, then, no objections, so ordered.
Then I both, of course, that that be sent on to the third reading, to the voting file.
So the motion then to send 477 back to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the majority leader.
I'd like to recognize the Vice Speaker on substitute bill number 506.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the Majority Leader for bringing 506 back. I want one amendment, and I've distributed to everybody. After the bill was passed, I got a call from one of the advocates, one of the attorneys that represents many of the individuals that receive assistance from Department of Mental Health, and was concerned about the fact that if we had an effective immediately upon enactment, that if Medicaid hasn't kicked in yet and any of them get their bills, they may be dissuaded from coming back for services. So, we've drafted a, an amendment, and it strikes the immediately upon effect of, I mean, effective upon amendment, enactment, to read instead, effective upon Department of Mental Health and substance abuse receiving certified status from the Center for Medicaid and Medicaid Services. And the intent of this amendment, Madam Speaker, is to delay the implementation or the effective enactment date of the act and the imposition of the charges, fees, until they can, they've been certified by CMS as, and can be getting the, charging the fees to Medicaid.
So do you have the language written?
I've circulated it, it's there.
Hmm, can I, can I see it? Pop you that, please. Okay, so this act then shall become effective upon DMHS A receiving certified status from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services.
Correct. And that means that when they finally can charge Medicaid, it'll go into effect, so that people don't start, unfortunately, those with insurance can get their insurance and start paying for it, but the, but the concern is, is that if a lot of those patients don't have insurance and they get a bill, it'll scare them from ever going back to the, to mental health, and that's not what we want to do. We want to, we want them to get their services, but we also want Medicaid to pick up the tab. And so, in order not to dissuade anybody from getting services that are imperative and needed, I would like to proffer this amendment.
On the amendment, hearing no objections, so ordered.
And with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move the bill back down to third reading voting file, thanks.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered. We're at substitute bill number 388, and I recognize the author, Senator Rodriguez. Okay, so we'll move on...
Go back to 505.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, go to 525. Senator Rispichio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 525-31 in the voting file with some little discussion.
Yes, please, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The reason why I asked for a little discussion is because I want to thank our Committee on Health Chairman Senator Rodriguez for holding a public hearing and all of our colleagues for understanding what Bill 525 is really about. What this bill is about, Madam Speaker, for purposes of our people watching on TV and for the media that's always following, is that this bill mirrors what's happening on a, on a national level, where when patients go in for screening of breast, their breasts to determine if there's any abnormal activity with respect to that diagnosis, some diagnoses come back as dense breast tissue, which although common is not abnormal, and some tissues can make it more difficult to evaluate the results of a mammogram, and may also be associated with an increased risk of breast cancer. And so what this bill does, given the new technologies that are available with the types of screenings that are available to these patients, it provides in section two that the doctors disclose to their patients if the results of the mammogram comes back that they do have dense breasts, and so it basically just allows and mandates that pursuant to federal law, that the following notice be required. And it says here on page two, line 22, "Your mammogram shows that your breast tissue is dense, dense breast tissue is common and is not abnormal. However, dense breast tissue can take, can make it harder to evaluate the results of your mammogram, and may also be associated with an increased risk of breast cancer." And then it basically allows that patient to take this information and get additional screening. So I'm also asking our colleagues to do this, that was in, it's in conjunction of October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This bill was filed on October 10th, and I want to thank again the Oversight Chair for holding a public hearing and having this bill now available for our deliberation. So I renew my motion to place this bill in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator Rispichio. You're ready, okay. So Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized on substitute bill number 388.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 388-31 as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform to the third reading.
And you would like to speak on it?
Yes, briefly speak on it.
May proceed then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 388 is an act to adopt isolation and quarantine procedures to prevent the spread of communicable diseases on our island. This was at the request of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. These proposed rules and regs, Madam Speaker, has gone through, of course, our public hearing here when the bill was introduced, but also via the rulemaking process. And so, what this essentially does, Madam Speaker, is put in place some procedures that would authorize the department to quarantine and isolate any individual that may have any communicable disease, either entering our island or someone who's presently here. Of course, during the public hearing, Public Health did, did share with us that the preferred way of dealing with any of these threats is to have a voluntary isolation or quarantine by individuals. However, in the event that that does not occur, these would set up procedures where the Public Health would be authorized to quarantine, isolate individuals, and then also authorize them and give them procedures on how to petition the court if there is any refusal, you know, at that point. And so this again was from Public Health, and what it does is just ensure that the health and safety of our, of our community is protected. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, then, any, anyone who would like to speak on the motion? So on the motion then to send 388 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Mabini on substitute bill number 395.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 395 to the third reading file, actually to move to accept the approved substituted bill entered by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, General Government Operations, Procurement, and Public Radio, and I'd like to briefly discuss the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Bill 395-31 is fairly, in my opinion, straightforward legislation, and we've had public, we had a public hearing, and we heard from individuals like our OPA, and just for clarification, this bill does not prohibit Gov Guam employees from, from receiving their annual leave that they're entitled to. What it does do is prohibit them from resigning then canceling their resignation in order to receive lump sum cash out payments for their accrued leave. According to the OPA audit, cash payouts for annual leave have been abused over the years by government employees who artificially resign, and then unfortunately, our public law allows for it. According to her, quote, "No law authorizing annual leave lump sum payments to government employees who did not physically vacate their position exists." Under current law, any employee of Gov Guam is entitled to annual vacation leave lump sum payments prior to their resignation. However, many government employees have abused this condition in the law. Some employees would resign, and then they come back, resume employment within the government with either the same position or another position, sometimes the very next day. For example, in her, in her recent audit report, OPA stated that the department direct, one department director resigned from his position on April 26, 2008, canceled his resignation the very same day, and then despite canceling his resignation, the director still received a lump sum payment of $13,680 for 320 annual leave hours. In addition, on October 2002 and April, in between October 2002 and April 2011, a total of 2,699 employees from 37 line agencies received annual lump sum payments totaling $11.1 million. Her audit actually revealed 300,000, that $300,000 paid 51 employees for artificial resignations. And just, just so we have a better picture of this pie, between 2002 and 2011, about a quarter of those individuals were artificial resignations. Of those 25%, 41 people received lump sum payments of over, of almost $166,000. 24 unclassified employees received their lump sum of about $136,000. And then 65 lump sum payments of about $300,000. And so those, you know, create undue burden to our agencies, especially if those resignations are not planned. We don't want to discontinue Gov Guam's policy of paying out unused annual leave. That's not what, what this is about. What we want to do is require that our departments and agencies, we give them a tool to better manage the installment payments or the payments to the, to those who are, who are leaving. Why? Because it makes it easier for directors and administrators to plan for, you know, their budget, especially when they're going into a new fiscal year, or even within a fiscal, their fiscal, fiscal year. Limiting actual cash payout to employees allows the agency leaders to make adjustments in their operations based on, based on financial impact of the projected lump sum. So it gives them an additional tool to better manage. What I feel most importantly that this bill does is it forces our managers to better manage their employees. I know sometimes workloads prohibit, workload scheduling, whatnot prohibits the usage of the, their annual or sick leave, annual leave. However, what we want to do is encourage our managers to plan and properly schedule the usage of it to avoid significant impact for unexpected accrued leave payouts, leave payment payouts. And again, this, this does cause undue financial burdens on agencies, government, and taxpayers. So one more time, this one, this one just gives another tool to our managers to better manage. It gives them, we, we want transparency, we want accountability of our administrators, so we want them to, so this bill gives them that responsibility and forces a sense of accountability, not only for the employers but also for the employees to plan out their, the usage of their plans, excuse me, their, their annual leave usages. We want to stop artificial resignations. It is, it, this cashing out is not, is not an effective way of managing our funds, and so I ask that my colleagues review Bill 395-31 and, and support this. Madam Speaker, I do, I do request that, or rather, I'd like to point out that there's possibly one amendment that I'd like to make as, upon review of the committee report and looking at the page one of the substituted bill, 395-31, line number 18. Now if you look, excuse me, let's, let's go back, line number 13, beginning line number 14, it shows that 20% will be disseminated no sooner than 30 days after they physically leave their office. So then 20% of their annual lump sum will be given to them, and then 20% every month thereafter. And then however, I looked at line number 18, and it says that if they return back into their jobs within 30 days of vacating a former position, then their annual vacation leave cash equivalent shall be terminated, which means, you know, it'll stay back in the bank per se. However, what I'm thinking is that 90, within 90 days, that would mean 60% of their annual lump sum, if they don't come back, would, would have been paid out. So I'd like to put in an amendment to move that to 90 days of vacating. And then should they come back after that, then there'd be at least, only at least a 40% balance, and, and they would have at least benefited and, and received 60% of their annual leave. So that, so I'd like to make a small amendment on line 18, within 90 days of vacating their former position, payment schedule of annual leave vacation leave cash equivalent shall be terminated. So 90 days.
So the amendment is on page one, line 18, changing the 30 days to 90 days.
That's correct.
On the amendment? No objections to the amendment, so ordered.
Thank you.
On the main motion, that's Senator Palacios and Senator Tom Adam.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, Bill 395. We have seen really very obvious abuses of this cash out annually, only to have the individual come back and reoccupy the same position, and already lump sum the amount, it's not returnable. However, I like, I have an inquiry that I would like to ask the, or the author, Madam Speaker. In the, in the case where the term of the legislature expires, and you know, I mean, my understanding is that every legislative term that expires, technically, everybody also expires, or rather, everybody whose employment with that expiring legislative, legislature also expires, and in this case, of course, the unused annual leave, of course, is paid, not knowing whether the employee, of course, would be rehired with the incoming new legislature. Now in that situation, does that mean then that if an employee say would receive the lump sum payment for unused leave in January because the current legislature is expiring, and if that person would be considered and again be employed continuing, continuing into the 32nd Guam Legislature, would that then, employee have to return the lump sum money? Or how would that be given out in increment of 20% or something? That's the inquiry that I, that I'd like to ask for clarification.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, if I could ask for a short recess, just so I can discuss this with the legal counsel.
Okay, we're gonna take a brief recess.
Thank you.
Senator Mabini still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Appreciate the question from the prior, my prior speaker. In response to his question, it appears that I am going to request if we could suspend Bill 395-31 for further discussion, move it further down to the, in the reading file.
So on that motion then to suspend discussion until later, so it continues to take its same place in the agenda, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Frank Blas on bill number 440.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Speaker. To move 440-31 COR to the third reading file, I also like to speak on it, please.
May proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 440-31 is an act to establish a task, task group within the government Guam Economic Development Authority for the purpose of developing a master plan for the Agania Spring and Menondo River areas. Madam Speaker, this came about as a result of, you know, where several years ago, while working as the Homeland Security Advisor, one of the things that was brought to our attention immediately after the series of storms that we were having in the, in the 2003, 2004 timeframe, was the need to be able, to be able to mitigate the Agania River for the purposes of reducing the flood plain that our, basically, our whole capital was in with regards to the flood plain map. And the preliminary estimates for the mitigation of the Agania River was pegged between $25 and $30 million. Then there was a whole effort, and there continues to be a whole effort, to be able to revitalize the city of Agania, and wanting to bring in, and, and bring in new business, new economic activity so that we can revitalize, that we can revive our capital city. But one of the main concerns that they had was with regards to the mitigation of the Menondo or the Agania River. So what this bill proposes to do is that, as in many other places throughout the world, what many cities have done was made rivers that basically flow through many of their, into jurisdictions, into an attraction, an attraction that can help to, to spur economic activity as well as bring people along the banks of the river and, and basically improve the aesthetics in and, in and around that river and around, and the surrounding areas. But also more importantly is it provides an opportunity to be able to mitigate and to put in those flood mitigation concerns, or to address those flood mitigation concerns that basically has, has brought our, our capital city under the flood plain. What this bill proposes is that in, working with the Guam Economic Development Authority, I've already had discussions with the USDA officials on a program that actually provides to conduct a feasibility study of making those improvements to that, to that, along the banks of that river, building basically a boardwalk so you can enhance economic activity as well as address the, the flood, flood issues. And this program already has a funding source that's available for a group to be able to, or a entity to be able to conduct these studies, to conduct the feasibility of, of actually building this. So what this bill proposes is simply just to form a task group so that you can start to look at the possibility of constructing a boardwalk type facility establishment along the Menondo River that would spur, that helped to spur economic activity by the amount of activity that could go on, on the boardwalk, but also to help to address the flooding issues caused by, by that river. And all that, all this legislation does is... And all that, all this legislation does is proposes that the funding source is again available through USDA. It's just necessary to be able to move this forward so that we can make, we can avail ourselves to this funding source. The great thing about it too is that you can use the studies conducted as a result of this, with this group as your application should you decide, should there be the decision to move forward on this thing as the application for the financing of this project. So basically, you know, the net cost to the government of Guam, absent of course the brain power from several employees, is zero dollars. Zero dollars that can help to mitigate and to cause, to resolve a twenty-five to thirty million dollar issue, but more importantly, to help to revitalize the city of Agania. And so I'm asking the support of my colleagues on this piece of legislation. There is a companion piece of legislation that hopefully can be addressed in a, in December session for the Talaful River, but this is for the Menudo or the Agania River project. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, hearing no objections, then sent it down to the third reading file. So ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker? Mr. Vice Speaker? For Bill Number 455, which is Speaker Pangolinen's bill.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized to speak on Bill 455, introduced by Senator Pangolinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 455-31 as substituted after the third reading file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. You're recognized.
Thank you again very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Mr. Vice Speaker, the bill here actually is designed to do just really one thing. The Surf Guam Commission's AmeriCorps state and national programs are subject to federal requirements for a criminal history check, and without compliance, all AmeriCorps programs will be at risk of suspension and termination. Now, to meet that compliance, the AmeriCorps, which we actually have a program here in Guam, the members and staff must first be granted authority through local statute, and that's what we're doing with this bill, because, or a federal law, for requests for background checks with the Federal Bureau of Investigation. The Guam State Identification Bureau, which is the office of the Deputy Marshal, is currently only authorized to submit requests for government law enforcement personnel and individuals applying for firearms identification card, while others are required to seek statutory authority. So upon passage of this bill, then it would still be subject, of course, to go through the Attorney General's Office of the United States. Mr. Santos, who actually is, works very closely with the AmeriCorps, Surf America Act, in essence, is in support of this bill because then it will comply with federal mandates. There were others who spoke, and just to give everyone an idea, there are about approximately two hundred AmeriCorps members and over one thousand resident volunteers assisting various local public programs that, and through their support, it is administrative, training, disability inclusion, and formally grants that are administered by the Department of Labor, Surf Guam Commission and staff. And there needs to be a background check for members that can be processed locally, efficiently, and expeditiously by the judiciary of Guam. There is a eighteen-dollar, eighteen fifty, eighteen dollars and fifty cents charge for this, but the FBI charges for this and Surf Guam Commission actually, in that application requires an electronic fingerprint and registration at the court. So the process, of course, is fairly easy, is efficient, and lastly, of course, is that it would be in compliance of federal regulations for these volunteers. So I ask our colleagues to support Bill 455-31. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Senator Palacios and then Senator Blas. Any other senator wish to be recognized on the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 455-31. Of course, I heard the public hearing, and of course, this bill received overwhelming support, including support by those very volunteers who will be subjected, of course, to the background check, the FBI background check. Mr. Speaker, the functions and role of the volunteers, for example, helping people in need and doing other community services, really is hesitated that they be, they have this background check so that there's no doubt that they are true, they are sincere, they are outstanding volunteers. I communicated with the Marshal Division of the judiciary, they are ready, they are prepared, there is no problem, as soon as this law, this bill becomes law, they will immediately begin processing. And it's a simple processing, it's just, I guess, put your palms on this electronic imaging and then it's going to send it electronically. The result will come back within three to five days. It's very efficient nowadays. However, of course, the Department of Justice, FBI, need a local statute such as this for them, for their own protection, in fact, to allow them to then release the information on that individual based on the local statute requirement. So that is why this is needed, Mr. Speaker, by them. That's the only way they can accept an FBI clearance request. So I rise in support of this bill, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, while I rise in support of this bill, there are some concerns with regards to, with regards to the costs, the cost of this whole thing. We're talking about the waiver of the fees, of all government fees, and this one here is actually a waiver for the fee for an FBI check. I just wonder, and I understand that the Speaker is just speaking on behalf of the author, is introducing the bill behind the author, but is, if she can yield or somebody can yield to the question with, how much does it cost? How much in fees are we waiving? Okay? So we ate, and you know, we're not only talking about the FBI check here, obviously, we're talking about police clearance, court clearance, tubercular skin tests. How much are we waiving? I want that to be recognized, and then how much do we, is this done annually? Because I want to still recognize how much in fees we're waiving annually to do this. So I, that's the question that I have.
Madam Speaker, you yield, please. On the record.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, of course, my committee presided over this, and that was brought out clearly. It's all in the committee report, I don't know the exact amount, but what is pointed out there is that the AmeriCorps, they have, they are prepared to pay the, for the FBI check, which is, I think, I don't know how much that is, it's fifteen, sixteen, seventeen dollars, and it's the same for the firearms, it's just the normal processing. But what is being waived here, I think, Mr. Speaker, and I brought that issue during the hearing, is the, I think, the, either the court clearance or some fee that we locally require, and that most of them who are already on board, and there are about five hundred of them, is that they're already cleared on the local side. Now, they need not to be cleared on the, I guess, on the FBI side, and they're estimating at that time that in the next two years, they probably would have a group, a corps of about maybe one thousand volunteers, but they're aware of that, and they, to them, that is not, that is not, that would not be an issue to them. I don't know the exact amount, we can look at the committee report, it's there.
Can we just take a two-minute break and somebody find the committee report and present it to Senator Blas? Okay.
Yes, based on the testimony by Mr. Perry Titan, the Administrator of the Court, he stated that the judiciary currently assesses a fee of thirty-two dollars for a national criminal background check. Of that amount, sixteen dollars and fifty cents is remitted to the FBI per, you know, the request with the balance of the funds to be used for local hardware and system maintenance costs. What he was suggesting that if, of course, in the initial language before it was substituted, that perhaps it might be best to require that Surf Guam Commission pay for these fees as part of their grant operating cost and probably limiting it to about fifty per year. And that was in the testimony. However, I know that in the original bill, there, it talks about the fees authorizing the judiciary to collect them and then make, remitting payments for, to the FBI, and that fees pursuant at that time shall not apply to requests made by the AmeriCorps program. So hence then, of course, the substitution of waiving of local fees for FBI investigations.
My point, totally, Mr. Speaker.
I think I've franked TI.
Very recently, you had the courts complaining with regards to not getting paid for all the services they had to provide. And while we may think and we believe, okay, is it thirty-two, is it fifteen? Okay, it's thirty-two dollars, which of fifteen they're going to have to pay. It's one thing to say that you're going to go ahead and waive the thirty-two, thirty-two dollars, and that will just pay, that's waiving the cost of you providing the service, but you're going to have to pay, they're going to have to pay fifteen dollars, and it's going to have to come from somewhere. It's not going to come from the thirty-two that they, that they're supposed to be collecting, it's going to have to come from somewhere. And I don't, I don't mean to be hard on this, it's just that we've got to be very wary as to what this is going to cost.
We'll take a brief recess and see whether or not we can resolve this.
We'll take a brief reassess and see whether or not we can resolve this. We're back on the record. Order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for the, for that little break so that we can discuss it amongst ourselves with regards to this. And I continue to be a concern, a cause for concern with me. Again, you know, very recently, the courts came in here and was, you know, requesting for this body to be able to assist them in being, in increasing the amounts of their allocations, the amount of money they were getting. Then we turn around and they're agreeing to be able to waive this fee. And, you know, in recognition that this is, they're all for this. I've got to say that, you know, I mean, again, I would need to say that while I'm not against trying to help and build the volunteer organizations and giving them the assistance necessary at this time, this fiscal time, or the time in fiscal crisis that we're, can we truly afford this? Can the courts truly afford this? They said that they could. I'd be very wary, okay? Be very careful then about coming back to this body and saying that you need to get, you know, you need money. So, you know, I'll continue to look and see if there's any way to be able to address this without, you know, jeopardizing the intent of what we're trying to do here. But there comes a point in time where we've got to figure, and then they're going to probably come back and say, well, it's only going to be about forty or fifty people. Well, you know what? Forty or fifty people times the amount that you're going to have to pay out of the judicial fund, that's a lot of money. So I'll go ahead and I'll listen intently and see whether there's something that we can work out. In the meantime, I'm going to, I throw caution to the wind with regards to what we're doing here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Any other senator wish to be recognized on the bill? If not, with a sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What, I was just thinking about it when we, in the initial discussion while we were on recess, about possibly making it so much like a requirement maybe for these different organizations that are applying for these grant monies that are for the Serve Guam Commission, that the Serve Guam Commission in its application, of course, for these monies to be able to have these students or volunteers provide, you know, public services that in their grant application, because all of these guys, when they apply, there's always that ten percent or whatever the amount is, up to thirty percent of what they call administrative costs. And so I'm talking like this right now, maybe in hopes in my discussion that legal counsel will be able to prepare this amendment, that they then be required in their, in their administrative costs is to actually absorb then the cost for the background check. And I hope that that then, I think, might appease the members, you know, and alleviate some of their concerns. Because normally, when you think about it, when you write for a grant, just like anybody else, we call it the non, indirect cost of ten percent. I've seen some organizations charge up to thirty percent. So whatever that amount is administratively to include then the cost of the fee. So if, while we're waiting maybe for legal counsel to do it, I'm going to, again, make that motion that will suspend this discussion and come back with that amendment that I'd like to proffer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
The next bill, Senator Palacios, four seventy-six? Okay. Senator Tom Addit, you're recognized on five thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that bill, five three zero dash thirty-one COR, be moved to the third reading file and I'd like to discuss it.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. You're recognized to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, in the recent discussions that we had which approved the government of Guam budget for fiscal year 2013, in there was a provision which appropriated a sum of three hundred ninety thousand dollars for the Veterans Cemetery. That amount was actually intended as a matching, the matching grant, or the matching amount to a three-point-nine-million-dollar grant that's being made available by the National Cemetery Association. And in addition to that, an additional hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for operations and maintenance. Now, the BBMR, in looking at the language of that particular section of the law, was not satisfied, it felt that it was too nebulous. And so they came back with a language that really was, you know, just cut through the chase and basically said the three hundred ninety thousand dollars that's being appropriated is for the purpose of conducting the preliminary engineering and architectural work required for the expansion and the upgrade of the Guam Veteran Cemetery. So, again, what we have here was a difference in opinion as to, you know, one language being, in their, in their opinion, was too nebulous and wanting something a little bit more simple and clear. And so Bill five thirty does that, provides the language that BBMR, that brings them into their comfort zone. Now, some facts that are important to this particular bill, so is one. We're not appropriating any more funds than what was appropriated already in the budget bill, the three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. All we're doing is we're making a change to the language. Secondly, it's a fact that the, in order for the Veterans Cemetery to receive those federal grants amounting to a total of four-point-two-million dollars, Gov. Guam is going to have to lay down the seed of three hundred ninety thousand dollars to initiate and accomplish the preliminary architectural and engineering studies and plans that are necessary. And these, the A and E work, is something that's going to have to be accomplished regardless of where the money is coming from, whether it's coming from a local bank, a bonding, or from a federal grant. And finally, the bottom line is that at the end of the day, we really need to begin work on the expansion of the Veterans Cemetery because the capacity is quickly running out. So I asked my colleagues to support Bill five three zero, and again, all it is, is changing language, which makes it very clear, at least in the minds of BBMR, that the three hundred ninety thousand dollars is for the purpose of providing funds for the architectural and engineering work that's required for the expansion and upgrade of the Guam Veteran Cemetery. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any other, any other senator wish to be heard on five thirty? Any senator wish to be heard on five thirty? If not, motion to send the bill to the voting file. Any objection hearing, none, so ordered. Four seventy-six, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, at the request of the Office of the Attorney General, in fact, they drafted the initial bill on this one and before, it's an act to add a new subsection I to Section twenty-eight point four of Article Two, Chapter twenty-eight, Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to the definition of pornography. And if I may read a caption of this, "The Office of the Attorney General discovered that the Guam statue relative to child pornography did not specifically define the term pornography or pornographic, and the reference in the definition of child pornography found in the statue was circular and referred to Chapter twenty-eight of Title IX Guam Code annotated for specific definition of pornographic." However, they found that that definition, the definition for the term pornography or pornographic is not really present in Chapter twenty-eight. And according to them, it appears that this has been an oversight or may have been inadvertently omitted, as much of Chapter twenty-eight was modeled after applicable laws in the state of Hawaii. So their concern, of their concern, they propose a definition so that this would then allow the Office of the Attorney General be able to prosecute without any technical difficulties. And the definition on page two is clear that pornographic shall mean any material or performance which all of the three items, three elements come together. And for example, the average person applying contemporary community standard would find that taken as a whole, it appears to the prudent interest, prudent, prurient interest. And another element, and this all would have to come together, it depicts or describes sexual conduct in a patently offensive way. And also, taken as a whole, it lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific merit. So in actuality, I mean, any images that really has no value at all essentially is defined as pornographic under these three conditions. This is the language proposed by the Office of the Attorney General that, based on their experience of prosecution of pornography, this will cure that difficulty, Mr. Speaker. And I asked my colleague to support this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Motion placing four seventy-six into the third reading file, there being objections, so ordered. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Tom Addit, you're recognized on an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And if, maybe if you can just clarify, on line three of page three, the first definition there is that if the, to the average person finds that taken as a whole, the, I guess the photograph or whatever it is, it says, "It appears to the prurient interest." Is appears the appropriate term or is it, should be, it appeals to the prurient?
I think, I think it is a typo. It should be appeals. Counsel has...
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Speaker.
All right. Can we consider that a technical and we'll have counsel contact the Attorney General to make sure that it is either appear or appeals? But two of us think it's appeals. But if there's no objection, we'll consider that a technical amendment that you can clear up with the Attorney General this afternoon. Any other senator wished to be heard on the bill? Senator Tonyada.
If we can just take a slight recess.
All right, we'll take a recess. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Upon consultation, Mr. Speaker, we found that Section twenty-five point zero one point five zero actually already has a definition of child pornography. So I would like to suspend discussion on this bill because I will consult with the AG immediately, referring them to this section and see whether that would satisfy.
Please do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The, so four seventy-six is suspended at this point. The next bill on the agenda is five twenty-two. Senator Munybar, you're recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Speaker, Manana Sidoos, I'd like to move that Bill five twenty-two dash thirty-one CR substituted by the author be put on the third reading. And if I can speak on it, please?
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. Speaker, Bill five twenty-two dash thirty-one CR substituted is an act to amend Sections four zero one oh five, four zero one 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 B, and four zero one one three eight of Chapter forty, Title V, Guam Code annotated, and to add a new Section four zero one three five point one to Chapter forty, Title V, Guam Code annotated, all relative to the Mayor's Council of Guam. This Bill five twenty-two dash thirty-one as substituted is a compilation of four bills, Mr. Speaker, that, Bill number four seventy-four thirty-one COR, Bill number five twenty, five twenty-one, and of course, this bill that we're hearing today, five twenty-two, all of which were publicly heard and reported out of committee respectively. The correlation of these four bills have in common that they are all pertinent to the Mayor's Council of Guam, more specifically, so they're under Chapter forty, Title V of the GCA. Section five two two dash thirty-one COR is looking at the term of office for the Mayor's Council of Guam, and it talks from going from a one-year term to a two-year term, and also cleaning up the present chapter right now, which was duplicated in writing, and that making sure that the officers of the council consist of the President, the Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, and also the Sergeant of Arms, which was inadvertently not included. So the amendment on, on this substitution will also go that the bill would allow the election of officers to be held every two years with the first election to be conducted on the first Tuesday in January following the general election as opposed to the first Tuesday of each January. And then Section two of the bill talks about the Mayor's being granted, Mayor's Council of Guam being granted, the authority to solicit monetary and in-kind donations for the purposes of defraying cost of the inaugural ceremony. Section three of the bill, Mr. Speaker... Section 3 of the bill, Mr. Speaker, talks about taking the Innerahan Community Center, the dilapidated center right now, taking it under the jurisdiction of Parks and Recs and putting it into the jurisdiction of the Mayor's Office in Innerahan. And Section 4 of that will provide for the administrative jurisdiction. Section 5 of this bill, Mr. Speaker, talks about creating the revolving fund for the Mayor's Council of Guam, and it would give the Mayor's Council of Guam the opportunity, as they to have collaborated projects. Mr. Speaker, I want to note for the record that each mayor has their own existing revolving fund, but it is important that the Mayor's Council of Guam, who comprises of all the mayors coming together, and when they have a unified project, that the funding go into that. Mr. Speaker, this section would also, these sections would also provide that the Mayor's Council will create their own checking account for the, is authorized to open their own checking account, separate and apart from any other fund, from the general fund, and it would be the Mayor's Council's Guam Revolving Fund. The council shall approve all expenditures of the MCOG sanctioned programs, projects, and special events. The minutes of the meeting must verify the authorization given to the council. There must be two authorized signatures, authorized signatures, that shall be the President, the Treasurer of the council. And it also notes that there are reporting requirements, as in the Mayor's non-appropriated funds, that the reporting requirement that after the end, 30 days after the end of every fiscal quarter, the President of the Mayor's Council of Guam shall submit to the public auditor and to the Illesletura in Guam, and post on its website in written and electronic format, including but not limited to, of course, the diskette CDs and email, a report making full disclosure of the Mayor's Council of Guam's revolving fund. Set reports shall be in the form of financial statements or revenue and expenditure reports for the Mayor's Council of Guam's revolving fund. And Section 6 takes this provision, these provisions will be enacted upon enactment of this legislation. And, Mr. Speaker, I just want to say, on behalf of the Mayor's Council of Guam and all the mayors and vice-mayors, this was at their request. We, again, had public hearings on all the bills. There was all positive support in consideration of these provisions and sections, and I ask that my colleagues please support me in their efforts to continue to give and empower the mayors to do their jobs accordingly. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I want to extend a happy Thanksgiving again to all my colleagues here and to all those listening. Sino Masih.
Thank you very much. Senator Adda, and then Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. I certainly rise in support of many of the provisions in Bill 522. I do have a little puzzled, though, by Section 2, and maybe if the author will yield. And specifically, my question is regarding the ceremonies for the inauguration of the mayors after an election. And right now, the current law authorizes the council to expend up to $25,000 from its annual budget to basically fund the expenses associated with the inauguration. Maybe I'm just out of touch. I don't know just how much, how much does it cost to conduct an inauguration, because now this authorization is there, and in addition to that, to be able to go out and solicit for funds. And the concern that I have is that, you know, free things in life sometimes are the most expensive things, so maybe if the author can just enlighten us a little bit as to how much this inauguration ceremony costs.
Mr. Speaker, may, I do not know the actual cost, detailed cost of how much an inauguration will cost for the mayors, but it wasn't the intent to give the mayors the $25,000 to use from the budget or to do, and to ask for the in-kind. It was to be able to saying that because they have to, they can, they're authorized to use the $25,000, they'd like to go out and see if they can take, instead of using the mayor's budget, is to seek in-kind solicitations and or, I mean, in-kind donations and or solicitations from the community at large, and not to do both. The intent was to be able to saying that they can use up to $25,000, but it doesn't give them the authority to go out and ask for in-kind donations and or solicitations. And I do not know how much the actual one is unless I, unless I do a call into them to ask them for the last report, or if the clerk's office will give that, because all of those things are reported on a quarterly basis. I mean, everything that they do is reported.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I just, I just raised that point simply because of the concern that I have with government officials going out soliciting for these sort of things. And it just, let's face it, it makes you beholden. Many of us, many of us really who are in elected offices detest having fundraisers where we have to go out and solicit, because that thing's gonna come back and bite you later, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Adda. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, it's funny, because that was the same thing that I was going to ask earlier. And I was thinking, I, you know, it's double the number, of course, than ours, but for the legislature, just for the listening audience as well, so they'll know, because sometimes they think that the legislature hasn't been transparent and accountable, and I'd like to, of course, say that that is untrue. They're primarily, when we look at the expenses for even the legislature, and I'm sure it should be, some of the parts, I guess, are similar. One is we hold it in our own house, which makes it, you know, of course, at no cost. The others, we pay for pins, the framing of our certificates, maybe flowers here, and then light refreshments, which actually comes to less than, actually, $6,000. So, you know, that's at least for this house, and I think we've been really good at maintaining that cost. There was a time, I know one time, where actually, previous legislature had gone out to just do the exact same thing as to solicit, and that's a good thing that this legislature is doing, you know, authorizing them to be able to go out and solicit, so they can defray the cost of their ceremony. I just want to get clarification to really make sure that at least on, if the author would yield, I wasn't able to get a clear answer. I'm sure she'll be able to clear it, is on Section 4, on the transfer of the property, only to make sure that we're not necessarily talking about Chamorland Trust properties, but more importantly, if it was in another department or agency, so if the author would yield to that question.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to Speaker Wampat for sharing that concern. The jurisdiction right now is under the jurisdiction of Department of Parks and Recs, and Department of Parks and Recreation. It's where the jurisdiction is coming, is at presently. And if this legislation gets enacted, it will go to the jurisdiction to the Innerahan Mayor's Office.
Any further inquiry?
Well, not for that, but just say that maybe if we can make it clear then, because we did that in another piece that we did with a park as well to the mayor, and that to make it clear then that it really is from Parks and Recreation, that then, you know, that that administrative jurisdiction now is transferred from Parks and Recreation to, over to the Innerahan, I mean, Innerahan Mayor. I think with just that, that might be, if legal counsel, yes, can, if legal counsel will be able to do that, as just to indicate that it really is in, the property is in Parks and Recreation, that it is now being administratively transferred over to the mayor. I think that that would make it best, so that nobody would get a heartburn of it being from the Chamorland Trust. Is, would that...
And so you're suggesting that in line 23, we include after transferred, hereby transferred from Department of Parks and Recreation
Yes.
to the Innerahan Mayor?
Yes.
And should that read the Innerahan Municipal Planning Council, or is it appropriate that it's just the mayor?
Well, see, I'm not sure because it says your administrative jurisdiction...
I thought when we did, Melissa, we did it to the council.
To the attorney general.
To the mayor himself? The office itself?
To the, I mean, not to the mayor.
To the council, to the center?
To the legislature, not the mayor.
Well, the reason why I'm, because when you look at the language, over to the Innerahan Community Center, and then transferred to the Innerahan Mayor, that, you know, that has to be clarified whether there is such a thing as an Innerahan Community Center, or the Municipal Planning Council, or to the mayor. And then the other, of course, when you say community purposes, I prefer that we, and I mean, when you list these things, I know it says not limited to, but to just give them full flexibility, I suppose, that, you know, would be activities that would, you know, of course, benefit, you know, the community. So I don't know what would be the best thing to recess to get that, just to clarify.
The chair will announce lunch until 2:00.
Okay, thank you very much.